Ask everybody to stand so we can put the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, to liberty and justice for all. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there is one. Item 5.6 in the consideration of bidder work for the City Hall Roof Silicone Restoration Roof Project. The contractor that we were recommending to contract with for the bid contacted us today and let us know that he didn't realize he didn't include prevailing wage in his bid. So he needs to increase his bid amount by $5,000. So it was the $78,500 bid was what staff was recommending and there would be an additional $5,000 cost if that bid is the one that's awarded.
Additional $5,000. Any other change? Do we have council approval of the agenda? Do we have a motion for approval? So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All of them say aye?
Aye.
I will say aye. Our next item is words presentation supporting profferments, we have none. Item 3 is case with comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public when recognized by the mayor, they come forward to the letter, identify yourself and please use the microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. And according to the state of the meeting law, no action will be taken by the council this evening and all items will be referred to staff who follow up with a brief. Is there anyone, Mario, that'd like to make any comments?
No, Mayor, I don't have any requests for public comment. And I did post that in the chat box and I did announce it while you guys were off the line.
Okay.
At this time, I don't have any comments.
Thank you, Mario. Okay, the next item is public hearing, we have none. Item 5 is consent calendars. We have six items. Approval of the minutes of February 6, 2020. Approval of the minutes of February 20, 2020. Approval of the minutes of March 5, 2020. Approval of the minutes of March 19, 2020, which is amended. Item 5, consideration of bidder work for the Gale Avenue Repairing Project. And item 6 is consideration of bidder work for the City Hall Roof Silicone Restoration Roof Project with the additional information that City Mayor gives here. Is there any item anyone wants to pull or discuss?
I would like to pull number 6, please.
Okay.
Okay, on that one, I was reading the warranties on both of those and the first one that they're recommending is a 20-year warranty. And the second one for a little bit more money, we could have a 15-year warranty. And I think that would be a better thing if you guys would like to look at that.
So the cost difference between the two, with that $5,000 increase that the first bid gave us, we would be paying $3,810.50 more for a 50-year warranty versus a 20-year warranty.
What did it say 50 years ago?
It's on the one from, let me find that.
The number two.
The 914 coating?
Yes.
Yeah.
So towards the bottom under silicone roof coating, it says this is backed by a 50-year product warranty.
I'm glad you found that because I was trying to find that too.
Just the coating?
That's what it appears, yes. It says shingles lifetime silicone roof coating backed by a 50-year product warranty.
And the only warranty I could see in the other one was 20-year warranty. That's why I wanted to bring that. I don't think that's that much more than since he did have to have tomorrow. Hopefully we'll get a better deal out of it.
It comes from City's General Fund. It's under building maintenance, it was budgeted.
So where is the city council's president to go with the other bid or want to recommend a revision?
I would like to go with the second one if we could, the one with the 15-year warranty.
And just to clarify, that's with 914 coating.
Right.
Ready? I agree on 50. Okay, so do we have a motion for approval of the council of the... And I'm going to do that one separate.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar? May I have a motion for that first?
I have a motion.
May I have a motion, may I have a second?
I have a second.
May I have a motion, second? We'll call, please.
Councilman Adams.
Aye.
Councilman Singleton.
Aye.
Councilman Sowe, aye. Mayor Russell Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Landers.
Aye.
Okay, item 6 is the consideration of bidder work of City Hall Roof Silicone Restoration Roof Project. Long has made, council member Ramsey has made a recommendation to go with the other bid, which is the 914 coating from Buckeye, Arizona. And the bid amount for that one was $87,310.57. Do you have any comments on that?
And the reason for that is it offers a 15-year warranty instead of a 20-year warranty.
Do we have a motion for approval?
Oh, I have that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second, may I have a rule call, please?
Councilman Sowe.
Aye.
Councilman Adams.
Aye.
Councilman Singleton.
Aye.
Mayor Russell Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Landers.
Aye.
Motion has passed. Okay, our next item is ordinance presentation, discussion and potential action item. We have one item and that is discussion and direction regarding fiscal year 2020-21 budget. Jasmine, financial services.
Thank you, so I'm actually going to make a comment before Jasmine gets started and sort of go over the revenue picture. So what you had initially seen was the general fund expenses and then you saw the enterprise fund expenses and so now this includes the projected revenue for next fiscal year. We always want to adopt a balanced budget, but this next year's budget isn't as bad as a lot of cities are facing. So we're projecting a deficit out written for $273,494, although the recommendation is not going to be to adopt it with that deficit. So there are some things that you can do to address that. The one that I think is probably the best option is, at the last meeting, council voted for two cannabis-related items, one for a consumption lounge and one for outdoor cultivation. The outdoor cultivation alone is projected to bring in 1.5 million in additional tax revenue. If the cannabis is planted in September, which is the anticipated timeframe that it would be planted, that would be revenue of about 1.1 million. That's not accounted for in this budget. So if we plugged in a very, very, very conservative number of $275,000 of additional cannabis revenue, that would balance the budget. But even more importantly, we have one deputy fire chief and three firefighter paramedics budgeted for a January 1 start date. That cost is about $245,000. It wouldn't be my recommendation to cut them now if you end up needing to cut them because they were priorities that you declared for Measure J. So if we can make it happen, that's great. We would start recruiting probably like early November. So late October, if we haven't seen movement with the cannabis items, then we can put an item on the agenda to not move forward with those positions and that would cut about $245,000 from the budget. So those are my thoughts, but that's just my recommendation to you. Obviously, you guys can vote and do whatever you want with the budget, but Jasmine's going to sort of go over the revenue for the budget.
So before you do that, if you were to cut, would you do that in mid-year of the budget maybe? Could we do that mid-year or what?
So we would actually do that probably as a separate action item in October because otherwise by early November, we would already start the recruitment process to fill those positions.
Yeah, I was just having this time now.
So ask everyone, we're going to go over the projected revenues. We're going to only highlight the major revenues in the general fund and kind of talk about how that number came about and answer any questions that you may have. So the first item is on page 3. It's the very first revenue account listed in the revenue. It's our current year secured property tax revenue. This number, we're budgeting $360,000, which is a $30,000 increase from previous year. And that's due to the revenues we received for 2019 and the first apportionment that we received for 2019-20. Based on that, we're budgeting $360,000 for property tax revenue. And I spoke to the county auditor controller's office and they said that property taxes should not be affected by COVID-19 because property taxes for 2021 will be based on January 1 value. The next item is 101404008. It's the one that's description is public safety pension.
101400.
4008.
Zero.
40080. It's public safety pension. We're budgeting $425,000. This is also a property tax related item and based on the revenues we received through December, we're anticipating a similar amount of revenue for the upcoming year. Moving down to property tax in Loeuwen VLF, that's account number 1014040120. We're budgeting $1.7 million. That's based on current year revenues received to date and anticipating, it usually comes to the city in two apportionments, one in the first half of the year and the second in the second half of the year. Since we've received $879,000 for the first apportionment, we're anticipating a similar amount for next year. Moving down to 101404101, it's sales and use tax.
Well, 401.
401400. Can I just say the last five numbers? That way it'll be easier because they're all the same.
Yeah.
41010.
41010, okay, go ahead.
We're budgeting $800,000. We received an estimate from HCL who does their sale tax reporting and analytical analytics for us. They're budgeting about $850,000 for next year and so we're cutting that down to $800,000 to be conservative given everything that's gone down with COVID-19. And there's still unclear information out to, this is a gray area for revenues for next year just because we're not fully through with COVID-19 and we don't have all the information. So one just below it, that's your Measure J 1% transaction tax, 41011. We're budgeting $1 million. We received an estimate from HCL for $1.4 million. And the difference between the two is that we collect Measure J sale tax on any car purchases that our residents take out of our city. We still receive that money back into our city. And so just to be on the conservative side, since we don't have a full year of Measure J revenue, we're budgeting $1 million. So there's room there for a possibility of bringing in more revenue. Moving down to 41080, that's your Mid Valley franchise fees. We're budgeting $380,000 and that's based on 2019 actuals and what we received to date for fiscal year 20. And then moving down to 42190, and that's your cannabis revenue raising fee. That's your 10% roof receipt tax on cannabis. We're budgeting $496,000 for the upcoming fiscal year. 696, did I say 4?
Yeah.
Sorry, too many numbers. And that is support footage tax as well. Yes, yes. The 10% applies to the center. The one right below that is 42200, that's your regulatory licensing fee. We're budgeting $376,000. And I just want to note on these items for the cannabis revenue, we are being very conservative in projecting that revenue. So we have one company in addition to the ones that we discussed earlier, the potential consumption lounge and outdoor cultivation. There's also one more that hopes to open right about the end of the first quarter into the fiscal year and we didn't include them. So this is based on which businesses are actually in business right now. Moving on to page 4. We're going to go about middle of the page. It's 10141656510, it's ambulance receipt. So that's 101416, it's after the section with 400. 41656510, that's your fire department ambulance fee. We're budgeting the same as last year at $1.5 million. And then additional revenue coming into the general fund down at the bottom, 10141656580 is your, is the IBT transfer into the general fund to cover for EMT related costs. And that was approved by council at a previous meeting. So that's a highlight overview of major revenues in the general fund. I can answer any questions.
Any questions?
Regards to the ambulance, do you have any clue if you brought in smart numbers? Are this here so far, are we justified in using that same number?
It's a number that I received from fire chief Dwayne and he felt comfortable with that number.
Any other questions on that?
Thanks for being conservative because it's always good to be conservative.
Page 3, went back to the cannabis, drug integrated. There's a huge discrepancy between 2019 adopted and 2019 actual and then goes way up again in 2020 adopted. What's the reason for that? And we have to worry about that plate. That's another huge loss in that.
I know that.
You want to read it?
Go ahead, Sean.
Go ahead, okay. In terms of like previous years, as we all knew when we first started going down this path, there was a lot of just, we had tons of applications coming in. We had a lot of businesses moving forward with site plan reviews and conditional use permits. We were getting them approved, they were moving forward. And it was really, it was uncharted territory for us in terms of being able to figure out exactly when folks were going to open. So the first year, we did it based on applications that we had, what people's estimated times were. Things were moving so quickly. Then the previous year, the next year, we were a little more conservative, but then starting to understand how the industry has progressed. It's a lot slower than we anticipated in terms of businesses opening. And so there was a, we basically tried to add, figure two quarters here, you know, maybe three quarters here, based on where they were at in the process, to be as conservative as possible. And now we're looking at, now as we've got a couple of years under our belt, we're kind of fully understanding the process and as the budget's a little bit healthier as well, we're able to be even ultra-conservative in terms of, okay, we've gone down this path a couple of fiscal years and we can, we're seeing a pattern where even though they've got their approvals from planning, it doesn't necessarily mean they're going to start construction or, you know, and open up in a period of time. Sometimes even they start construction and they're still a year out just to do tenant improvement. So we've seen a pretty slow progression of these businesses opening. And also what the state's doing sometimes affects their ability to open right away. And so that's why when we talked this year, you know, Marissa really wanted to stay conservative with, hey, just based on who's opening, because that's always been the numbers that we've done. We've just tried to estimate, when is this business going to open? So if they're going to open in two quarters, we know how much their taxes are going to be. We know how much their licensing fee is going to be, but we just tried to estimate, okay, they'll open, we're hoping they're going to open in six months based on the progression they've made thus far. And some of these businesses have just haven't opened. And so we've just taken them out and we're basing these taxes and licensing fees strictly on businesses that are currently open. And we've got a couple that are in the process, but whether they open, we don't know. And so we don't want to cut ourselves, we don't want to short end ourselves, you know, like we've looked at in the past as we've learned through that progress, just not knowing exactly how that was going to work. Hopefully that explains it.
Okay, so if we budgeted 2019, a million dollars, but we're, let's just call it $800,000 more. What happened to that money? Where's that $800,000? Where did it go?
Well, what were the actuals for 2008? Because 2018, or 20, let's see, 2000, we had, what, a million? You're talking about the revenue raising fee in 2019?
Right, so.
And the actuals.
Or when they do an audit, are we going to be $800,000 more?
I don't think so because I think it's still, and Jasmine might be able to answer that. I don't think it will. I think it'll still carry over based on budget to actuals, right, Jasmine?
Yeah, so when we go through an audit, they audit the actual numbers. They don't audit the budgeted numbers.
So based on what we're, what Jasmine, you know, they're presenting tonight, is based on those prior fiscal, those prior fiscal years already accounted for.
But did we spend that money? Do you know what I'm saying? Am I making sense? So if we, instead of, we're, we have this revenue in the budget of $900, but what actually happens is we only collect the $266,000. Where's the, where did it go? Because the budget, we still spent it.
Yeah, so if you take a look at page 1, the 2019 adopted budget was adopted with a surplus of 1.1 million. And that was because of the $1.7 million transfer that came in from the general capital project to the general fund. And so if our, we actually did better than what we, what we did, what we anticipated on June. So our end, any fund balance was actually better. But these are unaudited numbers and so I'm not saying that this money didn't go anywhere. It's just, the way that a budget document works is it's not, it's a fluid document, so it can change during the year. Because we budget ahead of the year, then we're putting our best guess forward. But when actuals come, that, those are the numbers that actually get audited.
And we, and honestly, those, that 266 number for 2019, I'm not sure if that's wholly accurate just based on the businesses that were open in 2019. But it may be. I mean, I think that Claremont was open and then there may have been one other business open in 2019 or two. We have, so I'm not sure if that's, if it is accurate, then it's accurate. But there, especially that year, you could see that number was high because of how many projects we had in the works. I mean, the budget worksheet that we put together for estimated cannabis revenue, there were a tremendous amount of businesses that were anticipating opening that never did.
But did we spend $800,000 left that year? If we did spend $800,000 left that year, that, when we budgeted it for $9 million? We budgeted $9 million and we included that $1 million from cannabis, but we only brought in $266,000. But we still spent $9 million that year.
So if you look at the very first page, we budgeted $7.3 million expenditures for fiscal year 19, but we only expended 6.7. So you want to look at that blue line that says the ending funds down? On page 1, I was looking at the subtotals for expenses. So.
Yeah, the expenses.
The middle of the page, so you look at revenues, the total adopted budget, budgeted revenues were $9 million, which is at the top of the page. The actuals came in at 8.7. And then when you look at the total expenses for the fiscal year 19, we budgeted $7.3 million in expenditures, but we only spent it, we only spent 6.7.
Okay.
We still have other funds to go through. Yeah, if anyone has questions specifically about the general fund. Are there any specific questions regarding general fund? No. We're going to turn to page 19. This is the, sorry, I'll wait. This is the general capital project fund. As you can see, for fiscal year 19, there's that big transfer out of $1.7 million, leaving that fund with a roughly $88,000 balance. This is the fund where we used to account for all of our grants, grant activity. And since then, what we've done is we've created a new fund for each one of the grant types. So Caltrans grants have their own fund, home grants have their own fund. And that was a recommendation that came from our auditors to keep federal funding separated, such as PDVT and home grants. And so there's no activity proposed for this fiscal year. So turn to page 22. This is page, fund 104, this is your scholarship fund. And all we're proposing is about $100 in interest revenue. Page 23. There's no budgeted revenues or expenditures in this fund. Page 24. It's the cost grant. And every year, we receive approximately $100,000 in revenue and a portion of that revenue goes to pay for the police vehicles. And then the remainder is available for the police department for their equipment expenses. Page 25 is the intergovernmental transfer fund, this is the IBT fund. We don't budget revenues in this fund just because we don't know what the anticipated revenues are going to be for the fiscal year. And we're showing that $574,000 transfer out to the general fund. Page 26. The first fund reflected here is the gas, the gas tax fund. Um, the proposed revenue, uh, for this fund is four hundred and forty-six thousand. The proposed expenses is also four hundred and forty-six thousand, but we are showing a deficit fund balance in this fund, and that's due to, uh, revenue shortfall in fiscal year 2019. The shortfall will be made up, uh, through a reduction in expenses in the coming years. Uh, the next fund is Fund One Oh Nine, this is your PDA Article Three. There's no expenses budgeted for this year. Uh, next fund is under ten, uh, one, one-ten, PDA Article Eight. And in this fund, uh, we are, um, proposing a revenue of three hundred thousand and, uh, expenses of six hundred and forty-seven thousand, and drawing down on the funds within that fund, uh, in the amount of three hundred and forty-six thousand nine hundred. Fund One Oh One is your, actually, and that's, uh, street, street-related funding. Um, so there's, uh, street projects that are budgeted in, uh, in this fund. Um, SC One, R, R M, R A, and I think that's called, uh, Road Maintenance Rehab, uh, or LBA account, I think. Um, we're budgeting three hundred and sixty-two thousand in revenue, uh, and the proposed expenses is one million. And, um, that, that fund is showing a deficit fund balance. However, there's, uh, expenses budgeted in fiscal year 2020 that was not spent, so that'll carry over to the upcoming fiscal year. Fund One Twenty-Five is the Measure C Street Maintenance Fund. We're budgeting a hundred and ninety-five thousand five hundred in revenue, five hundred and sixteen thousand in expenses. And again, um, this is the fund where there were revenues, there were expenses budgeted in the previous year that are carrying over to the next year. Fund One Twenty-Six is Measure C ADA Compliance, budgeting six thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars in revenue and fifty thousand dollars in expenses. Fund One Twenty-Seven is Measure C Flex Fund, budgeting two hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred in, uh, revenue and eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand in expenditures. And the deficit fund balance is made up by a shortfall in expenses in the, in the current fiscal year. Page twenty-eight shows the detail for the gas tax revenues. This, uh, these investments are provided to us, uh, by the state. And there's no major projects, uh, budgeted for this fund. Fund, uh, One Oh Nine has no major, um, expenditures. Fund One Ten, there's the Fort and Truman Street cross, there's the Gale Avenue Overlay Project for a hundred and ten thousand. And the ADA Improvement ATP Cycle Two expense for four hundred and twelve thousand. Fund One Eleven, this revenue production is also provided to us by the state. And the ongoing project, uh, is Sunset Street Improvement expense. In the Measure C Street Maintenance, the major project, uh, budgeted in this fund is the Flurry Seal Cape Seal. And then Measure C ADA Compliance is, um, fifty thousand for city ADA improvements. I forgot to mention the revenues are budgeted based on, uh, current year receipts and, uh, fiscal year 2019. Major project funded, uh, funded in the, uh, Flex Fund is the ADA Improvement ATP Cycle Three and the Center Median Improvement. The next fund on page thirty-three is our Home Program Fund. We don't have an active program at the moment. Page thirty-four is your Caltrans Grant Fund. And as you can see, the revenues and expenses, um, are always budgeted equal for, uh, Grant Funds. Page thirty-five is Special Revenue Grant Fund. These are, um, the funds created for any grants that don't fall under CDVT, uh, or home or Caltrans, uh, they're accounted for in this fund. Page thirty-six is the Habitat Conservation Fund and, uh, Public Building and Facilities Impact费 and Law Enforcement Impact费. Page thirty-seven, Fire Protection Impact费, Storm Drainage Blood Control Impact费. Fund One Forty-Five, Street and Bridges Impact费. And, um, there's a project, uh, budgeted for the upcoming fiscal year, Cambridge Avenue Signal Station. Fund One Forty-Six, Parks Impact费. And, uh, we don't budget revenues in the impact fees just because we don't know what the anticipating, uh, construction is going to be. Um, it's always just shown as actual, uh, when we, uh, create the budget document. Page thirty-eight is the Special Assessment District Fund. And the only active assessment, uh, district fund is Rural Water Assessment District Number One. And it's the only expenses, uh, bond debt. Page thirty-nine is the Coliseum Public Financing Authority Fund. And this is the fund that accounts for, um, the nineteen ninety-eight series A bond and the two thousand and twelve water and sewer bonds. And so, um, what happens in this fund is transfers come in from other funds and then the bond debt payments are made from this fund. Page forty is your water fund. Total budgeted revenue for this fund is six million. And of that, one point two million dollars is, uh, water bond proceeds that need to be spent from the two thousand and twelve water and wastewater bonds. Total expenses for the finance utility billing, uh, function is three hundred and eleven thousand. The water plant is four hundred and, four million, four hundred and forty-six thousand. The related two thousand and twelve water bond project expenses is budgeted at one point two million to equal the, the associated revenue. And the water distribution is budgeted at eight hundred and forty-five, four three thousand. And this, this, uh, fund is showing a, um, a shortfall of seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. There will be a separate item brought before the council with the need to increase water rates. Um, that's to cover the, um, cost overages and as well as to create a, uh, cash balance in the water fund. And also to make sure that, uh, bond debt covered ratios are met as written in the bond covenant.
When do you anticipate that?
Uh, sometime in July or August. The major revenue in the water fund is treated water sales. We're budgeting four point five million dollars. And the second major is the water, uh, untreated water sales. We're budgeting two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, which is a major reduction from the previous fiscal year.
Are people just not buying the water now?
Um, I. It's due, um, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Sean.
It's due to the, uh, limited, our, our reduction in allocation. So we're unable to, uh, sell the entire ten thousand acre feet of water, because traditionally we would sell the remaining, um, municipal industrial water to, say, Harris Ranch or Pleasant Valley Water Conveyance Partners. And so since we are limited to, I think it's sixty percent of our, uh, historical, we're not able to utilize the full ten thousand acre feet to sell to those other entities as untreated water. And so those numbers are drastically, that, that difference is basically the difference in our allocation for this year, um, compared to last year.
Page forty-six is the Gas Enterprise Fund. Total budgeted revenue is one point seven million dollars. Total budgeted expenditures is two point two million dollars, and it's a shortfall of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars.
So is that going to call for another increase?
Um, not in the gas fund. There is a caveat, there may be, uh, some need to do, uh, capital improvements within the fund, which would result in a rate increase. However, as we sit right now, the funds can cover the, um, uh, the overdid, overage in expenditures, as written there. Yes.
Yeah, as the council may recall, we had, um, we had a pretty hefty fund balance in the gas fund, and over the years, we've been drawing on that balance, um, in the, in not having to raise rates. And so we've been able to keep rates low. Um, and so we're getting to that point where our, our curve is getting leveled. Um, no pun intended, sorry. Um, and, and, uh, they're basically, we're getting ready where we're kind of leveling out, but then we're going to have to probably start looking at increasing. We can't continue to go down. But we've been able to keep those rates low for the ratepayers for quite a few years. Um, so, yeah, we're talking probably a year or so before we have to have those conversations.
So just for a minute, uh, we're talking about water increase funds. Could we arrange to get Dan Burman down here and do a presentation?
He is going to be the one that does it. I believe he's coming.
Yes.
Sometime in July.
Okay, perfect, yeah.
Yeah, we're going to plan a, kind of, hopefully a kind of a workshop with the council. Um, now that I've been involved for a little bit longer now and kind of fully understanding, going to get my feet wet in terms of these funds, um, to really kind of see what the, what the critical mass is for the, the water system and the Water Enterprise Fund, to, to give you guys a good picture of what we're anticipating and what needs to be, what needs to occur. And hopefully, you know, we'll be able to have those conversations here in the next month or two.
Okay, thanks, thank you very much.
No problem.
And Dan has looked at these budgets before?
Yes.
He was a part of the process. Page fifty is the Wastewater Fund. And this fund, we're budgeting, um, one point two million dollars in revenue, four hundred and forty-one thousand in, uh, two thousand two, uh, two thousand and twelve sewer bond proceeds. And there's an associated expense shown down below. Finance function, we're budgeting a hundred and ninety-four thousand. The wastewater plant, budgeting one million, uh, ninety-eight thousand five eighty-one. And then the respective, uh, bond proceeds, uh, expense of four hundred and forty-one thousand three hundred and fifty-two. And the wastewater collection, uh, four hundred and forty-three thousand six hundred and seventy. This fund, we're also showing a shortfall of five hundred and seven thousand. This is another fund, um, that Dan has identified, um, as needing a rate increase uh, because of the, uh, the debt service, coverage ratios, um, related to the bond.
And there, and there hasn't been an increase in rates for several years in sewer. Um, and a lot of it's attributed to increased, a lot of it's attributed to increased personnel costs over the years, operations of, you know, everything's have gotten more expensive. But for the most part, a lot of it's just ongoing expenses attributed to personnel costs, just increases annually, not, no major increase in the amount of bodies, but it's more else. Those costs and just the cost of goods over the period of time, it's been probably fifteen years, I think, since a, um, rate increase, or even longer, I think nineteen ninety-nine may have been the last resolution that, um, we had for sewer. Because even though we did the sewer bond in two thousand and twelve, um, we have, we didn't actually, I don't think rates were increased at that time.
Yeah, I think sewer rates were increased in two thousand and five, and the water rates were increased in two thousand and fifteen.
Okay. So it's been quite fifteen years since, uh, since rates have been increased. And so we've seen, and, um, those, those costs never go down. So, um, that, again, we'll be having that conversation as well. But these are, these are probably less critical to the water.
Okay, thank you.
Page fifty-five is the Sanitation Fund. We're projecting revenue of one point eight million dollars, one hun, one million eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-five. And, uh, of that revenue, one point seven million dollars goes to Mid Valley for them providing the sanitation services. Three hundred and thirty-three thousand is distributed to the utility billing function, and a hundred and twelve thousand dollars for sweep, sweeping. And, uh, in this fund, we have a surplus of, uh, forty-two thousand for the upcoming fiscal year. Page sixty is the Transit Fund. And this fund, we're budgeting three hundred and twenty-five thousand, uh, three hundred and thirty-eight expenditures, and the, uh, court funding expenses to be the same. Uh, this fund, uh, all the expenditures are reimbursed to the city, uh, from FDR TA.
So have, Marissa, have we had further news with, no?
Um, so we have. Um, as a city, we still feel that it's best to keep the, um, transit system in-house. Um, you're talking about the meeting.
Yes, yes, yes.
Um, I know that there is a big push because they would like to do it themselves and they can save money, but then the, some of our functions would be absorbed into the General Fund. Um, and we also have two local drivers, um, that are full-time city employees. Um, and it's not a cost to the city to operate it because we get reimbursed. So, um, if it's the council's direction that we turn it over to them, we always could, but that wouldn't be our recommendation.
Could you put that on, on item on the agenda for that? So that we all collectively can see precisely what's going on. I'm aware of it, so I think we all need to be on the same page. And the only reason why I keep getting asked about it, and I have, so, I have the council's decision, that is not my decision, so I say the council needs to be apprised of the whole situation. Thank you. Sorry. Okay, go ahead.
Page sixty-two, accounts for, uh, Fund Eight Fifteen, which is the Lurde Mott Algen Fund. There's no, uh, proposed activity for that fund. Uh, Fund Eight Twenty is your Professor Agency Fund. And we're budgeting one point three million dollars for expenses, one million three hundred and thirty-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-four, and corresponding expenses at one million three hundred and thirty of a thousand eight hundred and eighty. And, uh, this money, their, their associated revenue comes to the city through the Roth process of the property taxes collected. from the redevelopment agency. And a portion, a large portion of this is used to pay out the bond debt that's within the redevelopment agency. That's all that happens.
That's a lot. Any questions? Comments? Concerns?
Now, what we need to prove some more facts. We need to talk about how, yeah, I'm going to get it.
So, there's definitely direction that we need from the council. We don't want to bring this. So, typically what would happen is for the June 18 meeting, the budget would be on the consent calendar, which you always have the ability to pull something from consent. But most of the time, we've gotten to the point where you're comfortable to budget and it's adopted on the consent calendar. And so, we do not want it adopted with a $273,000 deficit. So, we need to talk about how to balance the budget. Like I said, I think we were very, very conservative on all of the revenue numbers. And we have, aside from the outdoor cultivation with ocean grown and the consumption land coming online, there is one additional cannabis business. And so, I think that that's going to be enough to, more than enough, to clear the deficit. But to be very conservative and even just estimate $275,000 more, that will cover our deficit. But we also need to think about some unknown revenue sources and how they may be impacted. And I don't want to sit there on this box, maybe he already knows the answers. But like, we have two school resource officers, one for Westfield College and one for the school district. And are they going to fund them next year? They don't even know if they're having classes. And so, that may be a revenue loss, but it directly ties to an expense. So, then we need to know from you, what do you, what would you want to do in that situation? Do you want us to cut the expense if the revenue is cut? Or do you want us to absorb that expense into the general fund and continue funding positions? And so, we just really need some direction from the council. Do you want to make cuts? Do you want to assume we're going to have additional cannabis revenues so the budget balances? You know, we, we've told you also that we were really conservative in the sales tax revenue and the Measure J. Maybe you don't want to increase cannabis revenue, but you want to increase closer to what HCL. And just paid us for the numbers because maybe you think theirs are more accurate than ours. So, we just need direction from the council. But we, it is our goal to bring you a balanced budget to adopt before June 18.
Any comments, Captain?
And I'm sorry, when I say balanced budget, I'm specifically referring to the general fund. We all know that the water fund is going to have a deficit.
Right, right. General fund. I don't, I personally don't like to see, being that we have a deficit, I don't like seeing it absorb more debt, which is going to put us further in. We've seen that before, Ron, right? Can we rely on the cannabis thing? You know, I mean, I realize that they have said that, you know, the grow thing, I mean, Clem or whatever it's called now, Ocean Grove, was generating a substantial amount of money, but we really know that.
Well, and I think that the good backup plan is if, you know, by October, it looks like it's not happening, then you still have the ability to not fund the vacant positions that would be filled January 1st. And that total is about $245,000. So, that leaves basically like a $30,000 general fund deficit, which truly may not be a $30,000 general fund deficit. Because what happens is, we have some positions that are vacant right now. And so, because we budget conservatively, I assume that a vacant position, when it gets filled, is we're going to have a classic CalPERS member fill it. And they're going to choose the PPO health insurance plan with families. And so, those are the most expensive options. That doesn't usually happen, but that's how we budget just in case that's the status of the new employee. So, I think that you do have a backup plan in the event that the cannabis revenue doesn't increase. But that's just my suggestion for what it's worth.
That's why you're saying, speaking of, any other comments, honey?
I have some. So, let's go back to the school officers. Chief, this is me. So, if they hypothetically aren't funded by the school, do we still have, do we still have Measure J funds for the officers that positions are not filled? Or is that?
We lose, like the city manager said, we lose the contracts, we lose the position. They fund 100% of the contracts and if we lose that, we don't get it. So, it would actually reduce me from 17 down to 15.
So, you're fully stocked right now?
I have three positions open right now. I have, I have one Measure J, one current, I have two Measure J positions and one new position that is kind of big.
So, if the school resource money went away for both positions hypothetically, you would fill one instead of three?
Right. They would, they would take over those old base positions.
Okay, that was my point. So, we're not going to lose those bodies. They'll be absorbed. We'll just lose the additional funding that we would have gotten.
Correct. Yeah, no, we actually would lose two bodies.
Lose two bodies?
Because we're funded, we're funded for 15. We have two positions that have Measure J. I lose those two school resource officers, that will take my two new positions, which will keep me at 15.
So, takeaway two?
Takeaway two that aren't filled.
Right. So, let's go back there to the cannabis then once again. So, how, how long will it take for us to know what kind of funding we need to receive? Well, it won't be for a year? It'll be like six months?
No. So, they, they would, we would know based on the square footage of what is planted.
Okay.
Because of the square footage tax.
Okay.
So, their plan would be early September. And you really have until like late October to know if we are going to fund the deputy fire chief and the three firefighters paramedics starting January 1st, because that recruitment process would start in early November. So, you have a buffer there to know if it's going to work or not.
Yeah, that was just my concern. Okay, it sounds really good, but if it's earned, all put together, of what we know in example, whatever. And then if it doesn't, then we can reevaluate or make a, a mid-year or whatever. How much budget would you do on that?
You could do that.
Because I think that's really important that if we get to that point, the weeds come back together and say, whoops, we are in trouble. We've got to chop something somewhere. But I want to make it really clear to everyone here that I am not for cutting fire from police. I do not in any way, shape, or form public safety with a primary focus to our community and should be to every community in this state and city. Every time I've ever seen a budget review, you need, you need police, because we weren't talking. Well, I'm talking about police, and I, I, public safety. And the first thing, when there's a budget problem or a budget, they want to cut the fire. Everything in common. And I can hear the police and people getting all crazy over. And we put right there in this very room to discuss it. But I am a strong, strong supporter of fire and police.
Yeah, that's where I stand right now. And I think, I think we're going to be, if, if everything goes good and we pass all the ordinances and everything has to go with the cannabis, I, we've got two partners out there that are really good. A farmer and a cannabis person. And both of them are doing very well here in this county. And the farmer's already done a lot of cannabis. So, that's, that was a test deal for them to see if they could grow it. And they, they had some really good deals on the hand. And they are going to be conservative when they start. They're going to start with about five acres if we pass everything. And then, once they do that five acre, it doesn't take very long for, for it to go through. It's like, like 60 days. I'm not even sure exactly how many days it takes for it to grow. But these, this is a fast-growing stuff. So, if, if it goes to how much they want to do, I mean, we're, we're going to see a lot of money come through. And I think it's going to take us the first year to, hopefully, we can trust them to, to go. And we're going to be able to see it before we have to cut these things. So, we'll know if we, we go with a timeline.
I just have one other question, but I forget. Wait a minute.
Measure C.
It's a 10 years, something like that.
17.
Measure D.
Oh, I'm sorry, Measure C.
Oh, oh, Measure the C.
Yes.
I'm not sure about that.
I know. I can't really read it.
Well, every, every time that one comes up, they, they redo it for either 20 years or so.
Well, no, I was just curious. We depend, we, we really depend on that money for rural areas. And you know what? Let, let me, I'll make a couple calls tomorrow to see what I can find out. And when Harry Monstrom was in there, that, that thing would never stop. I mean, Measure C. When the county was, well, that changed. Well, I know, he's gone now. But anyway.
I talked to the schools and they're.
Ron?
Yeah.
Mayor. It is, it's, it's, Measure C is good till 2027. They extended it for 20 years back in 2007. So, 2027 is when that's going to come up again for renewal.
Okay, thank you.
Schools that they're, they're on track for the officers, so.
They are, they're on track. Okay, they want to, you know, whether they want to get a money.
So, the direction from the council would be then, if they do not fund them, then we have two less bodies?
All right.
Both schools or just one?
Just one so far, but the other one, I mean, that's what else right now, they're not even fit to call us. They're not even backed up. They still owe a ball.
So, we don't know for sure either way, but we, we are going to need direction on, you know, we need to secure the funding from them. They are vacant positions. But if, if they say we're not funding them this year, then is that the direction of the council? Or are you trying to absorb them into the general fund?
I would prefer to do, absorb. We need those, as the police do, you need those bodies, correct?
Right.
I mean, that's as simple a thing as it is. You need those bodies. You have, you had a drive-by today.
How much does that add per body?
Give or take about $85,000.
Double or double.
No, no.
That's what it said, right around $350,000.
But there again, once we find out about whether or not the cannabis thing, you know, pan out or however you want to say that, then it's a force to take.
The only issue with that is if you already, because right now, we're actively recruiting to fill those positions. Then you would have bodies in there, then you would have to do layoffs, but you don't have, I mean.
I have actual, one, one person that has medical on Tuesday to fill one of the positions. So, if that's the direction we're going to go to cut that body, I need to cancel that, that appointment.
I don't know, that one, there's another $80,000 on top of that.
I've been leaving one, one bottle off. I still have two bodies to fill, one the current position and one the Measure J position.
But you're going to spend the money otherwise on overtime.
Correct.
So, it's a damn if you do and damn if you don't, we'd love to know that.
If I not fill those position, I won't be able to open my detective position back up.
Well, exactly. But the same thing, just putting in a picture, open it up.
Right, correct.
Because there's no way to run it.
Right.
We need the officers, especially what's not available going on locally that's all in the United States.
Sure, I totally agree.
Now, if we absorb them right now, could we still, in November, if we come up with something, or we can't do it?
You would be laying people off because the positions would be filled?
We hired the ones you're talking about. We're adding them more debt?
No, it's included in the budget.
Already included, one in the back number, whatever I have.
But so, in the budget, there is basically a wash on, there's revenue shown for two school resource officer positions. And then expenses that cancel out that revenue basically. So, if the revenue goes away and you want to keep the expenses, then you're adding $170,000 to the negative debt, which is okay if that's what you want to do. That's the, the best way to explain it.
$170,000. All the $273,000 we have now is roughly $243,000.
Four quarters, right? Did I do that correctly?
Okay, four quarters. Yeah, you're right, four quarters. So, we're at $443,000.
These associated revenue for the two school resource officers is $185,000.
$185,000. Does it go?
Yes, for the two. These are revenue associated. Because we're saying we're going to take the revenue out, right?
Not yet. I mean, we're just saying, we need direction if the schools come to us and say they're not funding them. What do you want to do?
Because part of the funding also covers vehicle lane and stuff they pay for, uniform allowance that they pay for, train overtime, the budget that is there that they pay for. That's where that total money comes from.
So, the true debt, I cannot believe that they will, through the contract, see one of them. Well, I know one of them, but true debt, then, I mean, $750,000.
$450,000, right? Keep having.
Yeah, so, give or take, or $450,000.
In my opinion, first of all, here with order, I think it's very, very important that we keep our free services. We need to pull that, you know, we need to develop, you need to sure to divide, I think, and so, get a shuttle. But the next round, you're going to see your budget, your overtime bill, right? We've watched that very closely before on accounting, if it's one of the big things.
Actually, I want to count on an additional count of the third.
So, what is your guys' pleasure here? Let's do a round of the table here. Ron, what's your name?
I want to absorb them.
Ray? Oh, I'm sorry.
Jimmy.
I'm sorry.
You're talking up to Jimmy.
Time, my gift is a call. Time, man?
Yeah, I think we need to absorb them.
Okay, Ray?
Right. Because we have an eye contact. Ray, what's your pleasure, Ray?
I think we need to absorb them. Alex? Like we're coming out with $450,000. We don't know what businesses are going to have to get through this. There's too many announcements for us to just start cracking up the debt and hoping to handle them. They're good plans. We tax $7 per foot. How do they plan to start taxing them down? They make significantly less per pound from outdoor growth, I think, over $1,000, close, $1,500, $1,300 less.
I don't think that's right.
I don't know. I got one.
Right here. Where do you get the numbers from? Why would she come into that then? I mean, that's basically what I asked me. That's pretty much what she said. She committed to that as part.
And, and, and I know that she's not going to, but I'm saying, why would you?
Well, who knows? When you're talking about something, I don't know nothing about that.
Don't know if the country model is going to come up in the morning real soon. Don't know if paddle art is going to come out. Paddle art was bought out by harvest. Harvest is opening in Hanford. Probably they need to, probably they need paddle art here. All that is, it's a funny way.
Got a question.
Yeah.
So, I don't want to be in the deficit either, but like I said, during these times, not only locally with stuff happening, but the United States is probably going to continue to get a little bit worse into the fall. Losing those officers and running the existing officers into overtime and then what if someone gets sick or what else, someone gets injured, that leaves the city vulnerable, real vulnerable. And I don't agree with that. I don't think that that's right to do that.
How long can we, how long can we go if people inside, it can really hurt it?
I, I hear what you're saying, but how long does the city run and how much deficit before I came on or before you even came on? You came on when the debt was already cleaned up.
So, it's, it's.
It's run deficit, certainly, to function somehow.
Right.
I'm, as I said earlier, I'm a strong opponent of the public state. I am, as I said earlier, I'm a strong opponent of the public state, period. And we need to narrow it down. We have a substantial increase in crime, in my opinion. Uh, I hear a lot of things at my place of business, from the government down. Other than that, that's from the police chief, and, um, just like I said today, we had a drive-by on both sides. Right near my house, and that seat, and, and, um, and you have, uh, some of that activity. So when we were shorthanded, you're going to see that increase, it's just as simple as that, um.
I would even, we even received a request today from the sheriff's department to, for bodies to go to San Francisco for the riding. I can't fulfill that because I got to keep them here in the city.
They were shorthanded. So my opinion is that we absorb it until we can see what happens and then, you know, we have to do that, in my opinion. But if we absorb it, well, that's, that's waiting to see where it goes.
So you, your recommendation then, just from my understanding, would be to adopt the budget as is with a two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar deficit. With the understanding that it may be larger if the schools cut the school resource officers, but we would still fund them then from the general fund without that revenue. Because our, our expenses would remain the same, just that we wouldn't receive that revenue.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a couple ideas, but let's finish off the police officers thing, we probably get into. So is that something that we vote on or we're, we're just giving you direction or?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna need, at the end, after you guys work out all the details, um, I'm gonna need direction with the consensus of the council of what you expect to see on the consent calendar for the budget for the meeting on June eighteenth. And, um, Mario did let me know that there are some public comments when you guys feel like hearing those.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
So, so where are we with the officer stuff?
Yeah, Ron, you still want to know that? Absorb it, for now, you want to do that?
I do.
Ray? I would not absorb it, but you got to be more of a, if we're going to try to absorb it, then what do we cut from? Because you can't have, you can't have the cake and neither too right now, so.
So. Can I answer the question at that end? I just got the, the message from Lori being away though. She said that they will not fund it for the first one of the year because schools closed. They will revisit it in January and pick up the other half if they decide to take it on, so make it half a year in town.
Okay, that's what it's going to be.
From the, I emailed the college last week, last week, the president, Odella, was on vacation on, she's back in, 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 at the college this week. I'm trying to respond to your, my request, so I can come back and report to you guys, hopefully at the next council.
So I just want to say something too, because for the general public and, um, I don't know how comfortable you are going through this budget process. So the city's budget is a spending plan. And so that's basically laying out the plan for spending for next fiscal year, but that doesn't mean that's going to be the true cost. And so we've gone through times where council members or members of the public say, well, in office supplies, you have eleven hundred dollars. Why don't you just make it a thousand dollars instead and you can save a hundred dollars? Because it doesn't work that way. We're still a city and we need to function, so for example, if the city clerk had eleven hundred dollars in office supplies, or I'm sorry, a thousand dollars, we cut it five hundred dollars and then she said, you know, I'm out of papers, so I can't grant council agendas anymore because I already spent my thousand dollars. Well, guess what? She's going to overspend to get the papers to be able to do her job. And so we've had budgets where we've gone line by line by line to consider cutting, and it really serves no purpose. Because the cost is what it is and we're presenting the best, um, expected expenses that we can. And, um, I mean, Darren can tell you, because the police department and the fire department are the largest costs to the general fund. They will submit what they're requesting in their operational budget, and then we go through and we're like, okay, do they really need that this year? Do they need that this year? So we've cut the expenses as much as we can. Um, the only thing left is really personnel. And those costs are what they are with the staffing that you have. So the only way to really change those costs is to change staffing. And so, um, you either find ways to cut costs or increase revenue to balance the budget, that's really the only options you have. And so that's why my recommendation would be to, um, anticipate additional revenue that we can plug in, not to show that we have a surplus. But just to balance the budget at, you know, if we plugged in, because Casey's presentation was for a full year, it would be one point five million. So if we say that she's planning in September, that would be one point one million. And so if we plug in and say, okay, well, we're only really going to count on two hundred and seventy-five thousand, then that would balance the budget. But worst case scenario, if that doesn't happen, then in October, we don't fund the one of the, or I'm sorry, the deputy fighter chief and the three firefighter paramedics. That cost is about two hundred and forty-five thousand, leaving really only a real deficit of about thirty thousand. But like I said before, that's with vacancies in there that we estimate high. So it would probably end up being a balanced budget. Um, but there are, I mean, maybe there's expenses that you want to consider cutting in the budget. Um, maybe there's other revenue that, like I said, you feel like HDL is, you know, better at predicting revenue than we are, and so you want to use their numbers. Um, you can really do what you want, but at the end of the day, it's just a spending plan.
Right.
So I have something else. Um, so looking at page five, the elective officials out of the general fund. Um, eighty-six, zero, one, zero, or training, travel and conference budgets is twenty thousand eight hundred. So I'm thinking or proposing that we cut that by half, take it down to ten thousand four hundred. And my reason is, we all had travel and training expenses already paid for this year that we did not attend and we did not get refunded. And that, to me, that was double dipping into the next budget. And I don't foresee a whole lot happening in the fall, because of what's going on, we go from the buyers to all this other stuff going on. So, um, that should give us a balance from January to the next budget season to work with for one or two things in the spring. And I think that takes us down from four thousand one hundred and sixty each to two thousand eighty each. If anybody cares about the individual numbers.
We got rid of it all, and then if we do have something against, or some for council.
It's going to be a position, I don't think, but.
Doesn't look like anything, uh, it really does. But they're getting it out.
How much is that total?
Well, it's currently twenty thousand eight hundred, and I'm proposing that we cut it by fifty percent, about ten thousand four hundred. It basically cuts all those budgets at half, but we have that existing already paid for items pending for when they do reschedule those conferences.
Sure.
And like, like Adam said, we can always change it later if it, if it gets better, so I'm, I'm okay with that, yeah, I'm fine.
So if I can give you my opinion for what it's worth, um, I, I get zeroing it out. Um, but it would be my recommendation, if you want to cut it, to cut it, but leave something there, and then if you don't spend it, don't spend it. Versus zeroing it out and then coming to council and asking for unbudgeted expenses. Because that's just going to impact the actuals without it being reflected in the budget.
What I'm saying is, we're going to break into revenue, maybe we'll be, so that is in the council, you know, that's your revenue. Well, that just cuts all of them. The revenue comes in, great, we get that, that's good. And I said for the, whatever we paid for already, I don't know what that one is, but what's they like, I believe two thousand is it for what we paid or? Do you remember what we paid for?
Uh, ICSD, in Monterey, so, and the one in Monterey. So I would, if it were me, I would anticipate those being rescheduled the same timeframe next year. So we don't need that budget, because they're, they're already paid for.
And we'll know by the first of the, uh, first of the year anyway.
And the only thing coming up in the fall that I don't think will come up will be the, the legal cities they have.
And, uh, so what's already paid for, for Monterey and Vegas for ICSD, um, does not include mileage or stays or meals. So that would be an expense if it's rescheduled next year, but the cost of attending the conference is already paid.
That's fair. Uh, and Lode is in September, so probably will not be, if, if they do that, that probably leads to that, that's pretty common.
So that means those two thousand each, so another reschedule for mileage, food, what'd you say, hotel?
Yeah. I'll say what I said.
Where's the car?
So what does, what does the council want to do with that line item?
I, I like to put suggestion is bringing it down to ten, cutting that, you like that? Yeah. It's there just in case, that's, you know, what? What is that thing with the budget stuff? And then it cuts it down.
Cut it by ten thousand more.
Four forty-eight.
My thing was more that it's already paid for, so I don't want to get another budget when we are already having to pay for it, so cut some. And that's what it's going to come down to, I think, on a lot of these things, is what can we, what little things can we live without?
I think we're doing basically what she said, obviously. If we're gonna, sometimes we're gonna go ahead and spend it anyway, you know, um.
Right.
Like if we're out of date, we're going to spend it. So if, if somebody really wants to go to some, they're going to go, and so we're going to spend it. Cutting all this stuff is, is not going to help, just like she said, you know, I don't think it.
So you don't want to cut them?
No, no, that's, that's fine, cutting that, but I don't think we're going to be able to go down, down the road and cut out four hundred and forty thousand dollars or whatever it is.
I'm watching Jackson say she wants to save them.
No, I, I agree with Marissa, you know, um, this is your best get forward. And so if you have it allocated and you don't spend it, that's residual, that's available for you to add back. So, you know, there's, there's that.
Yeah. So we just have to be more conscientious, uh, like say, uh, well, it's scheduled there for, well, you know what, we can't do it. I mean, it's funded, but we can't do it any further.
So I think if there, um, I'm going to ask you some of those are using a calculator, so. I think, you know, if there are ideas that you have that is going to cut a couple thousand dollars, I mean, that may be something that you guys want to talk about. But to go through and cut fifty dollars here, forty dollars here, it's really not going to make a difference because we've already cut those as much as we can.
I have to be honest, take that in your, your past, we.
And that was the longest city council meeting ever.
Do you remember that? Big cut. And, and we're ahead, at the end of the day, not really, though we still in deficit, yes.
I have another, uh, I'm looking at my list, so I have another item to off the, um, the treasurer position. So that's about fif- well, over fifteen thousand cost to the general fund. It's included in one-on-one, four-on-one, six-zero, zero-two-zero. It's not its own separate.
Since that's some elected official, doesn't that have to go through an election?
So I have a couple of questions, because I asked about that. All cities don't have treasures.
But we have, I think, I think that, uh, electors would have to say to stop that, I'm not sure on that. Mario, do you have anything on that?
The city court probably knows when the term's up too, I don't know when.
Yeah, the, so the treasurer is, um, correct, it's not a position in all, all cities, but, um, it, there is, it is allowed for in the government code. Um, that's, uh, in two dash one, five zero one in the municipal code, it talks about the position, um, and the compensation. Um, but I know it's, it's not required, and so, um, obviously the, I think the term would have to end, would be the requirement, and then, um, you'd have to revise the ordinance.
So would that be something similar like what we did with the former clerk position?
Um, yeah, very similar, but a little bit different, but yes, very similar.
And term is up, if you don't have a.
What is the cost?
Fifteen thousand, there's another one.
Okay, I just want to let you know, because I was just talking to Ron, because I remember that went through a vote in the public when they wanted to keep the treasurer in the city. Uh, it's just like in the minutes somewhere back, I don't know what year that was, but I do remember that, because this had been discussed some time back. And it did go to a vote in the public, whether they wanted to keep the treasurer or not, and the public voted to keep the treasurer. So I think before we admit a decision, we need to research that, find out for sure.
Did you look for the treasurer duty?
So I was, I was going to ask our financial director a couple of questions. Did your former city have one, a treasurer?
No.
Ray, Ray, this is Mario. The duties of the treasurer are laid out in the, um, in that article, so, um, it's, it's, um, chapter one, article five, and then section two dash one, five zero one, and, and a few sections after that. It talks about the, the functions, uh, the vacancies, the compensation. Um, the coordination with the director of finance and, and kind of their duties.
So does this position assist the, the finance director currently?
No.
So, I'm going to look it there.
It's a nonofficial, uh, check, basically. Uh, that's what people, when they, when they vote this in, they want somebody from the outside to just be able to say, you know, to, to look at, look at somebody, but they don't have an, uh, everyday say-so on it, or they, they don't even have a, really a say-so on it, because the council does. But they're, they're, they were the checkers to, to see if, if anybody was doing anything bad, and they never did find it. But we had some people in, in those days that were really looking at everything, and they didn't trust government, and so, kind of, they really pushed it out there. That's why it's mostly voted down.
Okay, I can tell you this is when that happened, I just thought that, that happened back in charge, that's it.
Well, there's a leaky, like, like, it, that is, we're imploding sometime about the charge, so.
So Mario, if the, um, if he was voted in by the people, would that position have to be taken away by the people or just by his term in the, in the council, take away?
Um, so it couldn't be done, uh, during the term, but the, the actual office is created by ordinance. And so you can revise the ordinance. Um, it, it looks like the ordinance was last revised in nineteen ninety-six. I don't know if that's about the timeframe, Ron, Landor Mayor, you were thinking?
Yeah, yeah.
That's going.
Yeah, okay, so we can do it by ordinance? We can do a revision of the ordinance?
I can't hear you, Ron.
We can do a revision of the ordinance, Mario?
When, when was it last revised?
Can we do a revision of that ordinance?
Yes, you can.
Change it, if we choose to do so?
Yes, you can.
Without a vote, without a vote of the public?
Yes.
What would the, sorry, what would the actual savings be until he goes into the next fiscal year, any?
Well, you would need, you would, I didn't hear, um, did Shannon announce when the term was ending?
No, never.
Okay, yeah, so it, it would, deep in mind, it would have to be after that point.
Okay.
So, um, it would be for the upcoming fiscal year, about seventy-six hundred dollars, and then about fifteen thousand three hundred moving forward in the fiscal. moving forward in the fiscal years after that.
You gotta run a tally over there?
Yeah.
So he does receive a stipend in health insurance.
But he pays, yeah, for $200, right?
He does.
He has $300. He has $300 part of the health insurance.
So is that?
Do we want to address that?
Yeah.
Do we, does the ordinance change?
Yeah, so that would, that would be something that would be brought on the agenda.
So that's coming up.
And then are there any other expenses that Adam's calculating over there, that's calculated?
I have another question, another item on my list, all adding to adding whatever he's adding. Planning commission.
$50.
That's about, well, that's over $4,000 right there, too, for that group.
Are they giving $50?
They already stated that.
Oh, they did. Sean, what's the average amount of meetings that you guys have now?
Um, we're probably, probably three quarters of the year, if not less. We started up doing our zoning, doing this five-year zoning code update. So we've been meeting more periodically, but with COVID, we slowed down. We have meetings coming up. It's kind of hit or miss based on applications when we receive development applications. So it's kind of up and down because we're really kind of triggered based on that, or based on, you know, certain types of amendments that need to be done to ordinances, like, just like these cannabis ones. So things that come up that are directed, like city-initiated ordinances. But really, it's really dictated by development and how busy we are in terms of applications that require recommendation and approval by the council.
So just to give you an idea, so if we have five planning commissioners and they're paid $50 a meeting, that's $250 per meeting. They don't always have them twice a month because sometimes they're canceled. But if they have meetings twice a month, then that would be $6,000. For the year.
For the year, all five.
Correct. So it's $50 per meeting, and that's five, so it's $250 per meeting that they have. And if they have two meetings a month, which is what their schedule is, but they don't always have two a month, then the most it would be $6,000.
Okay, so that, so that would take, they don't pay it for no meeting?
Correct.
So Sean, my question to you is, last time I attended a year ago or so, you do, in my opinion, the work. So it comes to council throughout the process, and the commission is, in my opinion, is just a middleman with you doing the work and coming back and forth to us. And in the meantime, they are saying yes or no, but we can overrule what they decide anyway. So cut out that five to six grand and cut out that middleman because you're coming to us anyway.
Well, not everything comes to the council. There are several, there are several projects that go to the planning commission. So they do serve a, you know, a purpose in terms of, for conditional use permits and for site plan review. They're more, they're specialized in understanding, you know, planning and zoning specifically. That would just add to agendas at the council, public hearings. Basically, the planning commission serves as kind of like an advisory board to the council for, you know, development applications and planning zoning. There are some, yes, that go statutorily from the state that are required, that the planning commission makes a recommend, recommendation to the council on certain actions, like general plan amendments and rezones. But there's a lot of projects that come through, like site plan review, or basically just design review applications, which are served well at the, the planning commission level.
Hey, my next question is, do all cities have planning commissions?
As far as I know, the majority of them do. I, I'm not familiar with any cities that don't. I've never come across any that don't. There may be, but I don't think, I don't know if there is any.
And the.
Mario, do you know of any?
Yeah, there, I do know of one, but it does cause issues because in a lot of land use applications that have to go through and have like an appeal, you know, for example, like if, if the council wants to serve as a role in, in the planning commission, and they make a decision on somebody's application, and they say, they know, there's, that has to go to an appeal. And it makes it very tricky for the council to decide, okay, who is, for the applicant is gonna hear the appeal of the council. And that's the, that's a real tricky situation when you don't have a planning commission. Because in our normal situation, the council is the one who hears the appeal from the planning commission if an applicant wants to take it, take it a step further.
When was the last time that happened in Florida?
Were, were projects appealed?
Yes, yes.
Um, I don't, I don't, I have not experienced an appeal. Most projects have been approved. I think the only one that could have gone to appeal was the Adventist Health when the commission made a negative recommendation. But that's still, when it comes to the recommendation, that still goes to the council. They're just basically stating that it's a negative recommendation to the council. And then you guys still, you guys review and look at the findings that were made based on that. And then, but they, they withdrew their application prior to that going to the council. That's why it didn't come to you guys.
Do you have a question? Do you have any?
I just don't think that we need them.
I sat on the planning commission many years ago, for seven years, and there's a lot there that we don't know about. Planning, conditions, I mean, ten things, voting, all these kinds of things, which is a whole different animal, which you want to call that as compared to what we do. I personally think that planning commission is a very valuable asset to the community, especially to the council. They do a lot of stuff, as Sean says, that we run where.
But do they do it, or does Sean do it? I know what council does because we attend it.
Sean puts it together, just like, just like staff puts together stuff around. They put it together, and then they research it, they study it, and then they're gonna be fixed on what Sean puts in. Correct?
Is there, the $6,000 that's always going to pay, is there?
Correct. I mean, but there.
But also remember that our fees, like a lot of our planning and zoning fees are based on absorbing those costs. So when I charge, you know, $2,000 or whatever for a conditional use permit, that includes costs associated with conducting hearings. So when we start, when we start reducing our expenses, then we also have to look at our fees to make sure our fees are representative of the costs associated with processing that application. So those, those hearings, that $6,000, or, you know, based on the cost of the planning commission, that's always built into when they do the studies, what the cost to process that application is. So the most, for the most part, we're, we're attempting to absorb those costs when someone submits a fee, a conditional use permit, or a site plan review, or any other permit that requires an application that goes before the commission, and also the council. So that's why our, you know, certain, certain projects, like general plan amendments, rezones, and subdivision maps, a lot of those are more expensive applications because they have to go through multiple hearings, because it goes through a planning commission for recommendation, and it goes to the council, and then they have to go to a second reading with the council for the adoption of the ordinance. So those costs, just kind of understand, it's not, it's not a direct cost that, that we're absorbing. A lot of the costs associated with applications are being absorbed by the application, by the developers.
So can we ask them to not get paid?
Oh, I'm sorry, what was that?
Can we ask them to not get paid for the year?
Can you ask them not to be paid?
Yeah, can we make an order, can we do something to not pay them this year?
I don't, I don't know the answer. That may be a question for the, for the, for Mario, if there's a way to, on how the pay works. I'm not sure how that works.
It's United States planning commission, but all of the United States, $1,000.
So Sean, it, it, what you just explained without the repino, aren't you, can't you still charge somebody $2,000 for whatever you're charging them for? Because it's still about to come through council, you're just eliminating that other body of people.
But it's less hearing. So it's, well, it depends on what it is, because like a lot of our applications are based on multiple hearings, too. So there's certain fees that may have to go down due, due to that. So it's all based on, you know, the cost. And that's one thing that we haven't looked at in a while either, is actually our cost for processing applications.
I remember when, I, no one got paid when I sat on the planning commission, and that's back quite a few years ago. But no one got paid. I don't know when that was implemented. I'm sure it documented somewhere.
Mayor, Mayor, this is Mario. There's a, an ordinance sanction, 2-3, 101, that states that the compensation in the planning commission is set by council resolution.
So we, we're gonna need some direction of staff.
I'll get to mute yourself.
Are you gonna want then, council and poll's idea was to eliminate the planning commission, and I think it was primarily because of costs. And Mayor Lander was interested in keeping them, Tom McAdams is interested in keeping them but not paying them. So what is the direction of the council so that we know how to address it in the budget?
Chief just don't pay, but I mean, I think we should pay the paper, too, for any of the people.
I remember not getting paid by the planning commission when I was there. No one got paid. I don't know. I don't want to do this, my commission. I think they're a valuable asset to, to this body. They're an asset for us, really. They do a lot of stuff for us that we don't realize. Am I correct, Sean?
Yeah, no, I, I feel there's, there's value in having additional review and oversight, I mean, in terms of recommendations and as an advisory to the council. I mean, this is basically, this is a council decision. This isn't something that myself want to be put on the spot in terms of making, you know, in terms of determination.
I want you to.
But, no, I, I find that it's valued because of the fact that you, you have those discussions and more technical discussions regarding certain items that can bog down a council meeting when, you know, when land use decisions are, you know, traditionally, you know, at least not determined by the commission all the time, that they serve as an advisory board to kind of review the project. So when they make a recommendation to council, it's a, it's kind of like you have staff, you also have five other, you have five other members that are providing input in terms of developing that overall recommendation. Because that's not, it's not necessarily always a recommendation from staff. Staff makes a recommendation, but ultimately, the council adopts a resolution, making a formal recommendation to the council, explaining, saying, hey, we made these findings, we feel that this is sufficient to move forward. And it saves the council a lot of time when the council meeting is really designed to do, you know, handle business, for the most part.
Right. I don't want to keep on like, I don't have a yes or no on money wise, but I would like to keep them. I for sure do want, I do want to keep.
Ray, what do you think? I don't know.
That's enough.
Well, if we say for one year, we're gonna suspend or pay for one year, we're gonna see how this year does. If we get that revenue from Kansas, we're paying that year. And at the same time, why don't we take it, do that, take that, too? And we see that revenue from, for one year, get from Kansas, and we'll, we can take that pay. We can do that both, we can pay, we can all vote. I think we're gonna do it for now, just probably just.
I agree.
So Mario, is, is council pay determined by population, and isn't it a mandatory thing?
Yeah, the, the council pay is capped. It's, it's capped is, is, it's not necessarily determined by, by population, but it's capped by population.
You can't go higher than two years.
So is it mandatory, though, that we receive a second for our services?
Is it mandatory?
Are we, if our pay is $300, are we forced to take $300? We can cut our pay, can we? As a council?
I believe you can. You just can't, it, it's capped by population, so you can't exceed that. But I think, I believe you can take less.
Can you look on that instead of just believing? Like a little bit more concrete information?
Yeah, you're gonna have to give me some time, though.
Okay.
Yeah, I would have to come back at a, a future agenda.
Adam? Oh, well, he's got this.
Are you done with this?
Three, well, what do we decide about planning commission?
That's our.
You guys say no, I say yes, Ray doesn't know, and Adam won't come to work, but for free, right?
For one year.
Right. Fiscal year.
No, we wouldn't, no, I won't come to work.
Right, you can't walk down.
And Adam does, too, for, for free.
Right, so go for one year, stay on the planning commission, so they're.
Yeah, we did it, I did it, for free.
I, I was about the cost, not, that was my only issue. So if we're gonna find a way to alleviate that cost, then.
Keep them.
Right.
I think it's important that you keep them. I really do, yeah.
Yeah, it's not a brutal attack on the people or the cost.
Exactly. Ray?
Ray?
So, probably an agreement? And a big merger?
That was the question.
Yeah.
Very good. And future items to increase our pay, that's all.
Yeah, we'll bring that back up. Okay, what else? Do you have one?
So.
I'm good for now. I'll see what you've got.
Okay, all right.
Mayor?
Yeah.
But we have a couple of people still who are waiting to speak. And then also, there's somebody typing, and it's very difficult to hear.
I can hear the typing.
We can hear the typing on the phone, too, so it's not here with us.
No one's typing here.
Okay.
Someone who doesn't, I'm muted.
Okay, let's, let's do the comments if they're still waiting. Is that agreeable with you?
I have a hard time hearing anyone, but hold them up.
Let's do the comments, is that okay? Mario?
I'm sorry?
We need to do the comments from the person that would like to make comments.
Okay, there were two comments. One person didn't leave their, their name. But Mayor Lander, you had made a comment about public safety, and, and they had asked whether you felt like, you felt the same about the fire department in, in regards to your earlier comments. And then Nathan Bosberg would like to speak, his comment.
Okay.
Bring an answer.
Nathan, you can go ahead when you're.
I'm sorry.
You have your question. Do you feel the same about fire?
Yeah, oh, I'm totally, I feel the same about police and, yeah, I'm sorry. It was hard to understand. I feel exactly the same about.
Yeah, because that's, that's what I asked you, too, when I asked you.
Public safety includes our and police. I'm a very strong public, publicist.
Okay. Mayor Bosberg, or former Mayor Bosberg.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So you guys are proposing almost a $400,000 to $500,000 deficit. You're depending on the cannabis money that has not been even approved yet. Kicking to the can down the line is what got you guys 4.1 million in the hole in the past. Prices on the extra people that you're thinking about putting in are going to be exponential. So, you know, every year it's gonna go up, up and up. You guys need to think about how you're going to cut, if you're going to stay afloat. Cannabis numbers have not been on even one time since you guys have. Cannabis numbers have not been on even one time since you guys have projected them, just saying, not even once. It's always been short. So I would say that doing that after, you know, we didn't know, we proposed that, and then we've learned since then, so I wouldn't make your budget, it's not fair to blame the cannabis industry when you don't succeed because you're spending too much. That's exactly what's happening, you're spending too much, and I disagree that you think that it's only for your personnel. Look at your check registers, I look at them every time, you have tons of stuff in there. What you can do is you can look at your personnel budget, and you can budget for your personnel, and then you can take and look at cutting three or four percent across the board on non-personnel across all departments. That's what I would start with. I think it's interesting that during the time that a certain council member is, people are talking about racist comments that someone she lives with, that she decides to cut the treasurer position, it's currently held by my dad. And yes, I do think this is political 100%. It's interesting that it comes up at this exact time, but this is par by, par for the course of when they're angry with someone, they reach out and try and hurt other people. But by removing that position, you're not hurting me, you're hurting the public. This was a position that was voted on by the public. Same thing when talking about cutting planning commissioners. This is a foolish move. It's, it's ridiculous, it should not be done. These people do a ton of work, they should get paid for what they do. If you want to talk about, hey, let's cutting the treasurer, then look at yourself and start cutting your insurance. Cut your insurance if you're going to cut the treasurer's position, that way you guys take some of this, too. Cut your guys' pay. I don't think, I think you can cut your pay. I don't think it's law you have to be paid for, I could be wrong, but your insurance, for sure, you don't need that, and that's a huge hefty thing. That's like, what, I don't know, ton more money than the treasurer position and the planning commission put together. So if you're really looking to be non-political and to save some money, why don't you start cutting with yourself? Start cutting from the, instead of cutting from services that benefit the people, where people are oversight and they look over things, and so you're, you're cutting the oversight out, which is not surprising. I had to match this four times just to be able to talk. That, just to talk, to be involved in, in, in the budget, and that's not right. And I understand you guys are all there today. We're not allowed to be there, why not? We could social distance six feet apart, you guys are all together, that's why it sounds like you're in a hall. So you've decided you can get together, but the public can't get to their, together. That's interesting. So I would say that anyone who thinks you should cut the planning commission, you should start attending planning commission meetings, that way you can understand what they do. And it's, it's appalling to the fact that you have not attended a planning commission meeting to understand how much they do, because if you did, you would understand that you don't want to put that stuff on yourself. You guys are going to get into lawsuits, you haven't got into lawsuits so far, because you have that unbiased committee that's sitting there. So if you take that away, then that puts you guys on the spot, I'm, I'm helping you out now. So anyhow, I just wanted to say, this is ridiculous, you guys need to send them back to the drawing board to look at cutting expenses. In non-personnel places, you can look over the check register. I know every one of you, at least the four that are up there, have all, have access to that check register and looked at it before that I was on council with. And so you know where you can cut stuff. We've all had discrepancies with, why is this and why is that? Those things could all be cut out. So my thing is, November's coming, it's coming. You guys can camp, you guys can campaign on the budget all you want, if, hey, we're going to, you know, do this, and hey, we're going to do that, and you're going to put us into the hole, but guess what? You're going to put us into the hole and we're not going to be able to get out of the hole, because that's what happened in the past when people have done this. So please, please, listen to the public, because the public is not in favor of this, I weren't, we weren't even allowed to be at the meeting. So I would say send them back to the drawing board, have them cut things that are non-personnel related issues, and let's do this again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a comment. My suggestion on the treasurer has been, I've been discussing it with staff, with the city manager for a little over a month, so it didn't just come up today. I just wanted that on the record because I don't need to be put on blast.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any others? Do you have anything you can give right here?
Yeah, right now we, our budget is $245,000 for the fire department for the exposition, right?
Right.
Why don't we just take the whole, and then we can do it later? That's kind of the thing, let's kind of knock it down to $175,000 a day.
I don't think we've got to. No, the three firefighter paramedics and the one deputy fire chief that were priorities we just fired from Mr. Davis.
We, we made priorities, I think everyone in the public will be in the past, and it's going to be a terrible disaster in COVID. But I'd say, take that out, that's going to profit dramatically our debt, but it's under $200,000 more than debt, then we talk about-
So those are non-fill positions already?
They're already not filled.
They, they were budgeted to be filled January 1st.
Okay, and then, and then not, so, I, what do you do for them?
No, those were the positions that I was referring to earlier, that we would generally start the recruitment process in early November.
So can we revisit that then?
Okay.
Can we revisit that then?
Yes.
Yeah, $245,000, that's $245,000 most likely. Is that it?
So you're okay to cut, but revisit?
Yes. I have no problem with that. I, I have no problem with that. Say, if it's any way she referenced, I mean, that's why I'm laughing, man.
It was just reversed.
Reversed, yeah.
Leave it in there and then cut it, as it goes for the time.
So we're actually just showing it that way.
And that's to do, to do that, right?
To cut it and add it back in?
No, to leave it and then cut it.
Yes.
I mean, it's really just a play on paper, it's, it's a spending plan.
It's just how it looks.
So we did that, we would be okay.
All right.
Yes, um, it's, you could do it however.
And do you want to help people for $40,000 instead of $195,000?
I might take that. As you're wanting that's great, I think, I totally agree.
So, um, assuming councilman Anderson's numbers are right over there and we're sitting at 195. I'm sure they are. So is that what you're anticipating then, is us bringing you back a budget document with a deficit of 195,000? Because that's what, that's really the direction that we have.
Well, they're, they're $500,000.
Right, but do you want to make, is there any other cuts you want to talk about? And I, I get what the former mayor said about going back and trying to cut expenses, but the reality is that it's just a spending plan, so if we cut, you know, three to five percent from vehicle repairs from the police department, we're still going to spend what we need to spend to get the vehicles repaired, so it really doesn't help. It just makes it look like we didn't know what we were doing when we estimated our expenses.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Okay, there you go.
Well, are we, so this is just going to come back to us?
Yeah, so it would come back on the June 18th meeting on the consent calendar for adoption. So, I, I mean, you could pull it from consent to make further changes, but it's going to be very difficult. So that's why we want to get all the direction we can tonight, so that when you see it on the 18th, it may be, you know, I make a motion for approval, or maybe I make a motion for approval with this one change, but not 25 changes.
Now, does that take away the planning commission and all that, or is that part of it, too?
If we do that, then we need a $183 budget.
No, we're going to bring that back, correct?
Well, I, it's up to you. I have it written right now, I'm zeroing that out in the budget document.
Okay.
And then working on the language to suspend it for a year.
Okay, so that will come back if it's, if any of you-
Yeah.
Okay, there's a new announcement or, or is it necessary there, right?
So here, let me tell you the changes that I have.
Okay.
So on the council, travel and training, 101, 401, 86010 is being cut to 10,400. And the treasurer position would be not funded after the term is up. And the planning, or the cost for, um, planning commission, I think I budgeted like 4,200 for the year, because I know that they don't have all of the meetings, so then that 101, 401, 60020, that is the line item that council and planning commission is paid from, so you would see that decreased by the, the expense for planning commission.
What was my number, because you had it $6,000?
I said up to $6,000, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, you said decrease to what?
I don't know what the decrease number would be, it was just going to be eliminated into the cost of planning commission. And then I just have a note that Adam has a future agenda item regarding council pay, but that's not going to be reflected on the budget because nothing was decided on that. And then we're going to cut the one deputy fire chief and three firefighter paramedics that were scheduled to be hired up of January 1st.
Well, I'm still going to go with that one, but it's a lot of the stuff that I don't know. Well, basically, you helped it decrease for the annual, so we appreciate that, right? Okay, so that's what we are at this point, and then we'll come back to it in June.
June 18th.
June 18th. All right, we're going to move on to taking interest, we have an announcement.
I do not.
Okay, council members, any announcements? They're, they're having a, I forgot, oh, they're having a, a COVID-19 vaccination coming, coming up?
Yes, um, at June 11th, and there's going to be some information coming out from West Coast Medical Group.
Thank you. I'm the mayor of the county, um, I would like to thank everyone in the community for being diligent and, um, being very, very aware of the COVID-19 issue. Unfortunately, we have increased in cases, a lot of the tests were done, so we have had an increase. So this issue is not over. We had one year, unfortunately, and, um, I take a sympathy to the families that have been involved. It's nice to see that the community is still thriving, people are working, I'm happy to do that to work. Other people in the hair business are very happy to do that to work. And that's probably very, very beneficial, considering all the things that we've seen on television in regards to the demonstration, the papers that are lying in the shadows. We still need to be very, very cautious as to what's going on in these states. Can you figure any items?
All right, can you repeat it so I can write it down?
The, the, we got, period of that term, 40 years. Sorry. It's a long date, that's a city council for one, that's a year. A little later, but it'll be a little bit, in the last.
What did we already say to you?
For the budget document?
No, 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 yeah, for future desire.
So it's based on the changes that you want to make to the budget, so it would be to discuss a $50 pay cut for city council, and then an item, an ordinance to eliminate the city treasurer position, and a resolution to suspend the pay for one year for planning commission.
And what I would like to see on my ordinance on the treasures, I would like to see the documentation, if it's at all possible, as to when that was implemented the way it is, whether it was sent on a vote by the public or not. And also, if possible, I would like to see when it was implemented or being discussed that we were paying the planning commission. It's been some time ago, but not, I know it's there somewhere. Anyway, thank you. Any others, agenda items? I think none. Okay, we're going to go into legislation, we have one item. That is comprehensive renegotiating government code fight 195746, seeing negotiators, city managers, municipal attorney, Mars, the Department of Public Administration, COVID-19 Association, this means you have no insurance, meaning you got a three inch forty two inch situation, and have a big deal.
We're going in there, staying in there. Are we saying we're going in there?
We're too close to it.
Right.
I have my nap.
I have my nap.
Hey, I have to go.